Okay, I'd like to call the November 7th Long Hill Township Board of Education meeting to order. Will you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Long Hill Township Board of Education was given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act as follows. Notice was sent to the Echo Sentinel and Daily Record on September 21st, 2021. Notice was posted on the bulletin board in the first-floor entrance of the school district administration building, Gillette, New Jersey. Notices were filed with the township clerk and notices were mailed to all persons who have requested individual notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler.
Here.
Mrs. Daly.
Here.
Mr. De Jamos.
Here.
Mr. De Giorgio.
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf.
Mrs. McLennan.
Ms. Nyquist.
Here.
Ms. Rivalo.
Here.
Mrs. Case.
Here. So we are gonna, thank you, start with a presentation on student achievement data. So the board is gonna make its way down.
Good evening, welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us. And our first thank goes to Jack Harnett, our technology director, being here tonight, getting everything set up for us, and also assisting with the data organization. But our data marshal is Ms. Backer. Ms. Backer serves as the district assistant principal, and she's done an amazing job not only administering the tests, looking for specific ways to support students in need, but also bringing together all of the information for tonight's presentation. So thank you to Jack and thank you to Melissa. So we're gonna begin the presentation soon as the clicker clicks. Oh, you went, okay. Talking about some of the specialized tests that are offered. So the majority of students take particular tests that are administered by the state, but there are also tests that are for special populations. The first one is dynamic learning maps. So those tests are designed specifically for students who may have intense special education needs and not working at grade level. To put these students into an environment where they would have to take a grade-level test would not be appropriate. So the state offers a dynamic learning map assessment and offers direction that if there are less than 10 students who qualify for those particular types of tests, the data cannot be reported out publicly. Here in Long Hill, in this particular year, we don't have any students who are taking a dynamic learning map assessment. We do mention it so that you know, but it's not part of our assessment criteria. Yes?
Do we know if we had students that were in that category?
Over the years, we have, but we've never had more than 10, so we never publicly report out the information. Our ELL, English Language Learners, is a more substantial population in the district, and there is a special test for those students to see how their requiring of English language is progressing, and that's the Access for ELL tests. So when we look at the Access for ELL tests, we have a breakdown here. This is in spring of 2022. So just a few months back, we had 47 students take the test, and interestingly, that's 17% of our population. So it's a substantial subgroup here in Long Hill, and we look specifically at K through 8 because we don't offer assessments for English language learners in preschool. The students are assessed in a performance assessment, so there's listening, there's speaking that they have to respond to, engaging in a conversation. There's also writing and reading comprehension. We have great news, and we made this the lead of our presentation because it's about some of the things that we're most proud of here in our district. Our students are excelling in this area, and our teachers are doing an exceptional job with our English language learners. 14 students graduated from the program, meaning that they developed enough English proficiency that they were able to exit the program last year. We currently in district have 39 students who are receiving English language services. It's not just the test that offers us an indication of how the students are performing. We also consider the home language that is spoken, so what are they most frequently conversing with in their families? We talk about the teacher evaluation, what do they observe, and then we also think about how long they've been in the program. Typically, students will be in these programs for three years, but we've seen in many cases in Long Hill that students are graduating from the program or moving on into fully mainstream education within 15 months. If we take a look at the access scores, the highlighted yellow column shows us what that 4.5 means. So if you go down to the left, you can see it means expanding or bridging. So when we're talking about a student who doesn't require pull-out instruction anymore, when they've graduated from the program, what we're saying is that they know and use English and that they can use the technical skills for that particular curricular area. Or we can say that they know and use the social and academic language. Social language is so important because that's how our English language learners are relating to their peers on the playground, when they do small group conversation. So it's a more nuanced level of language, that incidental learning, understanding idioms and jokes. And as the students progress through the system and the educational curriculum for English language learners, those are the types of things that are emphasized more. So you can see that last year, in 2021, we had 3.75 of our population, which is, you know, two students entering the program. But compare the far-right column to the middle column, and you can see how our students are progressing. If you look at that 4 and 5 range, the 23% and the 36%, it's excellent to see that we're moving our students along to that level where they're ready to operate in the class with all of their peers with less assistance. As we move through, I just wanted to talk about how do we connect with our families of English language learners? So some of the things that we've introduced that are new this year is something called Language Line Solutions. It allows any teacher who wants to call a parent to have a phone conference with a translator on the line. It also makes translators available for Zoom meetings when requested, for IEP meetings, and it allows us to make sure that we're having important conversations about student progress with their parents in their native language. We're working to establish and expand a tutoring program with students who are bilingual at the high school, with our bilingual students here in Millington and Gillette. We have developed a system within school messenger to have our e-blasts and alerts translated into the home language. This is an area where we have to do some work. We always think about using Genesys, but it's only as good as the preferences that people set. So if someone doesn't indicate a language other than English in the preferences in Genesys, then all of their school messages, all of the communications from the school will still come in English. So one of the things we're looking to do is to reach out to families if we think that they might need additional translation tools for important school information and make those changes in Genesys. The other thing that we can do in that regard is any communication that comes from an extension of the school, the Friday flyer, a backpack mailing. Can we also work to translate those to make sure that we're reaching people and keeping them connected to the school in the way that we would like to see them engaged in all activities? There are at least 10 languages that you can translate on the district website with the toggle in the upper-left corner. And one of the great things that one of our English language learner teachers, our ESL, just recently shared with me is that parents have been talking about the Google Classroom setup that they have for all of the lessons, and that parents are going through those lessons with their children and identifying that they too are developing English language proficiency and learning with their children at home, which I thought was, you know, we always try to find those COVID silver linings. So this was one example of where COVID helped us with those Google classrooms. So before we move on to the next section of the presentation, I just want to pause and see if anybody has any questions about the English language learners and their test results over the last two years. Yes?
Do we know what percentage, how many kids that represent?
In program now, we have 39. And last year, we had 49, 47, and it was 17%. We didn't have any port-of-entry or those students who come to us and are enrolled with limited English, you know, their first school experience. We didn't have any new enrollees. This year, we had two last year.
So, can I?
Yes.
So then if we had 47 students graduating, 47 minus 14 doesn't mean they're not.
That's because we did have some new students, but they weren't port-of-entry-level students. So they didn't necessarily go in that entry group, but they might have come to us with some proficiency. Hi.
I just want to follow up on what you said with port-of-entry, because next year, we talked about the student treatment. We could have students come in in kindergarten first grade who are at that level and come to us where they're learning language. So the numbers at the bottom aren't reflective of our program, but are reflective of kids' role in the district and where they're learning.
That's true, and thank you for pointing that out.
When you compare that bottom level, next year, year after, we have to be people who've been.
It could be different, and we could drill down on that data more and also show where the people that come into district, where they're placing. So that's a really fair point. But I also want to take a moment to thank the board on behalf of the students and the faculty for increasing our ESL instruction. So up until last year, we had one full-time and one part-time teacher, and we increased that at the beginning of last year to two full-time teachers, and I think we see the results of that in the testing. And in addition, I would also say that in speaking to teachers and our ESL, an area where we really need to work is offering greater support for the general education teachers who have English language learners in their classroom. What strategies can we give them? Can we offer more push-in support to make sure that those students are as comfortable in the learning environment as they can be and that they're contributing? Because we're also gonna see that in pull-out replacement, they'll contribute with a lot less hesitancy than in the general education classroom. So what can we do to make sure that that same level of comfort, participation, and inclusiveness happens throughout their day? So that, yes?
When they're in the classroom, do they have any type of paraprofessional with them if they are no very level of the language to assist them?
So it would depend on the individual student, but it wouldn't be just language-based that would give that additional support. So they're not going to see that unless there's other learning needs as well. Our teachers have included some additional work to develop a greater understanding of what it's like to be an English language learner. So a recent PLC, Ms. Anderson began by speaking in Hungarian and teaching a class in Hungarian, just so, and you're sitting there following the directions and you're listening to it, and she start to feel like what it would be like to be an English language learner with your content. The other thing that we did is, and it doesn't look like this, but just to give you a reference point, so each teacher in their classroom knows where the English language learner places on this scale. Are they a 1? Are they a 3? And then they have a flip chart that tells you strategies and techniques that you can use to best reach a student on a particular level. So what can you anticipate that they would understand, and what workarounds can you use to develop greater understanding?
What languages do you know?
Yes, so the majority are Spanish, and then there are breakdowns of Eastern European languages as well. Yes?
I just want to say, maybe if you correctly, the translating into the different languages, didn't that kind of add to our session with the diversity of the PLC?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, so that was a benefit, that the teachers brought that to our attention. So that was really good, that we need that kind of input so that we can meet their needs of what happens to be done.
Yes, absolutely. Other questions, comments, any observations from the classroom, anything to add? Yeah.
Well, I was after Ms. Anderson's presentation. It was, you sat there with Hungarian, she did the whole lesson with her book, and you really got submerged in it. It was a great presentation, and she did that for us. She was brilliant. Yeah, so, you know, we wanted some comedy, maybe some intelligence in the testing. You know, a lot of times when they don't have any language, they're silent for a long period of time, just listening, observing, is what basically has to be done. And that's okay, but we see a lot of that, especially in their language.
True. Yes. Oh, she was gonna defer to you.
Oh, I was just gonna say that this must be very difficult for teachers in the classroom, trying to juggle all their students on top of a student who they have to engage, and obviously there's the language barrier. What would teachers find to be more helpful to assist them in this regard?
It's a great question.
A lot of visual aids, visually and unvisual aids in this kind of situations, if you have to show, you have to exhibit what type of aid.
Yes.
I was gonna ask, there are several questions here. I'm very appreciative of seeing the numbers, you know, for real, that this has been a very effective year for ELL. Have we, I was gonna ask, do we regularly reach out to parents and ask for, okay, well, I'm not sure, resources, or what they found to be particularly effective for this?
So those conversations generally happen directly with the ESL teacher, but I think your question is a little bit more broad in terms of data that we could get, that we could use as a, to inform our decisions as a board, when we're doing staffing, to inform our decisions as an administration, and that's definitely something that we could look into in terms of surveying what things have worked well. I know that we do monitor and follow-up, for example, if there's, hasn't been a sign-up for a parent-teacher conference, or if there is another way that we are seeing that they might not be responding for information, are we delivering it in the best way? But I think it's a great idea to give a survey of the parents.
And what would follow up?
Mm-hmm.
Do these ESL teachers, do they want one-on-one or small group time with these students? Is that how it's structured?
So, yes. So the instruction is grouped in the same level of numbers where you saw those students. So they might not all be on the same age or in the same grade, but they're at the same proficiency level or on the continuum of acquiring English. And then in addition, the students are tested individually, and they do have opportunities for one-on-one instruction in that way. What else would you add?
I would just say, in the event that there was a student, it really is based on the specific need. So we do have a student currently that does need the one-on-one instructions, and that is put into the schedule, the ELL teacher, specifically, mainly if they're currently. But then they push in, they'll do a small group, so it really just varies upon the needs of the year.
Great. Any other questions on this topic? Okay, so the next topic that we're going to look at is COVID-related learning loss. So Ms. Case provided us with a great resource from Georgetown Edu, I always say it wrong, Edgenomics Lab. And it gave you an opportunity to log on, put in the details of your district for COVID. How long were you on remote? How long were you in cohorts? And takes that information and makes a prediction about what the typical learning loss would be in mathematics and in reading. So it's nine weeks in math, three weeks in reading. Then it talks about how much would it cost to be able to close that gap of that nine-week or three-week learning loss? It identifies that the highest impact and the best way to close the gap is tutoring, which is an expensive proposition. And the prediction for our district would be to close this gap completely, we would have to spend $569,000 in math, $131,565, I saw Dan look at me when I didn't give the exact number, in English, Language Arts Reading. And our district received $202,000 in those S R 3 funds. So while we received a tremendous amount of money, this graph illustrates that it wouldn't be commensurate with what tutoring programs could possibly do this. Ms. Case, did you want to add anything here?
We're, in some senses, we're similar to other districts, like the numbers, but we got a lot less federal funds. I mean, I took this course with people who represented, like, the LA Unified District, and they got so much money. So this is, it's a, it's a small amount of, it's a small amount of money that we got, but I think we've used it effectively and as efficiently as possible. But this goes to show you, it's, it was a much bigger task than the funds that we did receive.
Yes.
So this, I understand, it's a matter of plugging in, but is this in actuality what our teachers and our testing is indicating that our students are, like, really did lose that nine weeks in math? Like, is that what really happened here?
That's a great question, and as we go through each of the slides, I'll try to address that more fully in terms of the amount of loss. But I know that Ms. Backer and I have been discussing it, and one of the things that we're gonna do with the data that we're about to present with you is look at the students, where they tested, did they take the summer institute? If we look at our summer institute cohort of students, did they find, did that work for them? Did they improve over time? If that's the case, you know, should we continue the summer institute next year if we see that the students participated in after-school tutoring? So the data is helpful, not just to give us a snapshot of where the students are, but also to make sure that the reserve of money that we have left in S R 3, we use appropriately. And, hm?
Do you have any work?
Some, yeah. So this Start Strong data has three primary purposes. The first one is to give you a very specific answer to areas of COVID-related learning loss. Where do you see it with the students? And it quickly provides educators with that information. You often hear the word snapshot, and I think it's important that whenever we present student achievement data, we talk about, well, what is it? So in English Language Arts, this is the reflection of a one-hour test and a one-hour test in mathematics. So it truly is just kind of a sampling of all of the different competencies that the students are supposed to demonstrate, and it's multiple-choice, one-hour, computer-based test, and that's how we get the results so quickly. So it's not like an SAT where you're sitting for four hours and you're doing a large amount of writing. It's to give us quick data and give us a sense of how the students are doing in each area. It gives us an internal monitor. It provides information for faculty and staff. It wasn't designed to compare district to district or district to state. It's really just to get involved with the particular students and see how they're doing. Now, you may remember that when it was announced that the Start Strong would be administered again in the fall, there were a number of districts who said, oh, please, there was a kind of an uproar of, we've done enough testing, we just recently did this test. But I will say that I find the one benefit to doing the test again is we can do a cohort comparison. So we can take each of our grade levels and see, you took this test in the fall and you took it last academic year, let's compare. So over the course of the next couple of slides, we're going to look at cohorts. So we're comparing students to students, and that's really the most valuable information that you can look at when you're discussing student achievement. So this is first the broad picture. We're only talking about English Language Arts. So we're gonna go first through all the English Language Arts performance, pause for some questions, and then we'll do the same for science and math. The key on a chart like this is the more blue, the better. So when you first look at this, we see a strong amount of blue, and that means that that student can handle any test task, again, from this one-hour assessment. So they moved through it quickly, they had little difficulty, and they had a high rate of accuracy on the test. Those students who were in the red column, it means that they performed well, they should be equipped to handle the work that's coming at them in the classroom, and they might need some minor supports. The yellow are the students that we want to focus on. And as you can see in each area, if you combine blue and red, we have smaller percentages. So we're over, for example, over 75% and well over 75% in each of these areas. So those are the students who are gonna require more individual attention but may also need remedial instruction. So in the next series of slides, what we're going to do is drill down a little bit on this and see how did they perform just a few weeks ago when they took the test, and then how did the same group of students perform last year? And remember, blue, blue, blue. So this is our current fifth grade. If you look on the left-hand column, this is our current fifth-grade class, and then in the right-hand column, you have their performance in fourth grade, same group of students. So if we look at this group of students over time, we can say we've made some significant progress. The number of students that need strong support has cut in half, and we have significantly increased the students who are proficient, ready, and going with the teacher on pace. So our current fifth grade has done a nice job with the support of their teachers in closing that COVID-related learning loss. This is English Language Arts. Next, we look at our sixth graders, and again, we see a similar trend. So this is our current sixth grade, and you see, again, cut in half almost, the amount of students who need some support, but we still have a fair percentage of students who need strong support in English Language Arts here. So they've made progress, but it's not as dramatic as we saw in the previous grade. So they've made progress, but it's not as dramatic as we saw in the previous grade. Next, we look at our current seventh graders. So you see the difference from the previous two slides. In this case, the performance was better the year before. There were more students who demonstrated needing less support when they took the test in sixth grade than in seventh grade. So this slide is indicating to us that our current seventh grade in English Language Arts have lost some ground on those competencies. So this is relatively new, just following COVID. In the last part of the presentation, we're going to go back to the traditional NJ SLA, which was offered for the first time in two years in the spring. So this test is just about COVID-related learning loss, and it's those one-hour snapshots. Yes?
I've noticed that the sixth grade and the seventh grade already, the strong support is increasing. So I feel like those students who were lost continue to be lost, and the people that were on the verge of being lost have become lost.
That's a fair assumption. I'm going to just toggle back to the slide before, so you can see what you mentioned. You mentioned sixth grade.
Yeah.
And now seventh grade. That's a great observation. What are we doing with the students who are struggling the most? And what are we doing to make sure that that number doesn't continue to grow? As we go through the presentation, we're going to talk more about that, but I also think it's a great question to have in mind as a board member when we go through these curriculum and student achievement efforts. Now, if we look at our eighth graders in Language Arts, we see this was probably the strongest performance from year to year in this band, because we've reduced everything. But as Ms. Rubelo just pointed out, it seems like the percentage on those who need strong support is still similar, although it was almost a little bit less. I think we were talking two students on this particular chart. So we've looked at these charts, we've looked at these students, and we have to ask ourselves the question, they invested the time, they took the test, the teachers have the results of the test, what did we learn from it? So the first thing we learned, and again, we haven't gotten into math, so we're just on English Language Arts, in fifth, sixth, and eighth grade, they definitely have reduced the impact of COVID-related learning loss, thanks to the hard work of the teachers, really focusing on those who needed some strength and some remedial skills. Remedial skills instruction, left out an important word there. We don't want to give them remedial skills, right? We want to instruct them to improve. Students in grade seven did lose some ground on those proficiencies. Now, the Strong Start data is strongly aligned with the New Jersey content standards. So one of the things that we have to make sure that we're doing, which we already are, is monitoring those proficiencies on the assessment with our curriculum. So we get a wealth of data, including how each student answered each question, we can look for trends, to see if maybe paragraph formation or sequencing of ideas in writing tasks is something that is an area of weakness, for example. And then that would allow us to go back to our curriculum and say, hey, wait a minute, where do we assess this in the curriculum? And are we making sure that we introduce it at the appropriate grade level and with the appropriate amount of attention? Finally, we do need to ensure that our learning objectives are clear, that they have a progression. We've been talking about student achievement in our Student Achievement Committee and with our English Language Arts teachers at the middle school. What does the continuum of a strong writing curriculum look like? What do we expect when students enter middle school as opposed to when they're preparing to enter high school? And this is an area that we are hopeful that we can begin to develop part of our strategic plan and part of our professional learning communities, to have that strong sense of expectations at each grade level. The teachers do an outstanding job offering that instruction, but are we providing enough time for teachers across grade levels to meet? So for example, we have grade-level meetings at Millington. Do we need to introduce more grade levels where we have third, fourth, and fifth-grade teachers talking together, or all of our middle school teachers talking together? The focus on team is so important for consistency in a curriculum at a particular grade level, but vertical articulation across grade levels is equally important. So seeing how we're offering that to our teachers is critical. So questions on English Language Arts? Yes?
I had asked earlier to you, but I understand that the fourth grade, you know, because they didn't take it in third grade. But if this is about COVID loss, what, how do we answer that for fourth grade?
So really, the only thing we have to offer in terms of our fourth graders' performance is that very first slide. So when we look at the group of fourth graders, they're at about 65% with less support, and then about 18% some support. So it looks like they're close to 80% of students operating with ease in the classroom, and 20% needing greater support. If you also think, keep that question in your mind, when we get into the NJ SLA data, we'll be able to see more specifically how those students, same students, performed on a different test. Any other questions on Strong Start ELA? Yes?
Are parents notified and how their children tested?
Mm-hmm.
And how were they notified?
The results will come, sort of like the NJ SLA will come in a paper report, and it'll be sent to help me have it received.
Okay.
So I believe by sure they came in December.
Yeah, mail.
They sent it to me via email.
The NJ SLA?
SLA or Start Strong?
Start Strong.
Start Strong was sent to you?
Yep.
The NJ SLA was sent to you?
Okay.
Yeah, the Start Strong we didn't receive yet.
Okay, that's really good, yeah.
And the interest, it does look the same, and the interesting thing is, we're mandated to give this presentation on a certain timeline by the NJ DOE, even though this is giving you kind of universal, but you don't yet know exactly where your child fits in. But that's the mandate, yes?
These kids are general education and special education.
All students.
So I think that's important to take into account.
Thank you for that. That's a good point. These are total students, tests taken, full grade level.
So Dr. Wood, you mentioned before about cross-checking which students were in the summer institute, using the summer institute as an option. So from sixth grade to seventh grade, that's where we lost those students who were in sixth grade last year, who took Start Strong this fall, that's who lost the most ground, right? Is that what we're saying?
Current seventh grade.
The current seventh grade. So do you know, or maybe Ms. Backer knows, how many six, like, rising seventh graders? Is that how we turn it? How many of them went to summer institute?
So we're going to need some more time to pull that through, but I think Ms. Backer and I would both agree that unfortunately, middle school students' attendance in the summer institute is low. So I can say that as a general term, because the students in K through five tend to be a little bit more enthusiastic about attending, and, you know, as a parent, how many battles can you pick? And sometimes it's a little harder with a middle school student, but Ms. Backer and I will be going through that and a follow-up Student Achievement Committee. And I think probably also will share with Mr. Borgo through finance, just in terms of, not that we think about our children as a return on investment, but what programs are offering us the greatest return on investment. So over the course of the next six to eight weeks, we'll share more information on that, and we'll also provide finance with, okay, with our S R three, this is where we've seen the greatest benefit, this is what we recommend continuing next year. Yes?
With your statement about middle school, you know, what students that maybe show having the greatest efficiency, would it be too much to say that you would reach out to the individual parents?
Well, one of the things that Ms. Backer and I were talking about is if we found that a student performed on the Start Strong testing at, let's say, the most support, they need the greatest number of interventions, then what we might, and they didn't attend the institute, is we'd say, we have these two years of testing, and we would individually reach out in that case. Okay, so at this point, we're going to do the same drill, but we're going to look at math. Oh, sorry, I forgot. Okay, science, I have to slip in first. I can't, we can't do a cohort performance on science. The science assessment is offered in sixth grade for Start Strong. So these are not the same group of students, but generally, you can see that it's across the board, a very mixed bag of performance in science. That's consistent with other districts that I've asked. And part of the reason for that is that the science curriculum is not as closely aligned as the English and mathematics curriculum, and people may, districts can have more flexibility in when they introduce certain topics in middle school. So this is not as surprising, and it's typical with what we've seen in other districts. Okay, so not as much blue as we saw in ELA. That should be kind of the first thing that we take away when we look at the math performance. We also love the blue in geometry, but when we look at something like that, we also have to think about what are the numbers behind this? So geometry is a very small group of students, and that's going to be a group of students who are taking a high school math course in eighth grade. So we would fully expect them to be there. So while we're excited and proud for them, and we're happy to offer that rigorous course, the opposite is true of our general education eighth graders. And to me, out of everything that we saw in this data, that was the biggest takeaway. A student in eighth grade who's not taking algebra or geometry, they're operating on grade level, they're taking eighth-grade math, we should be able to do better than this with those students. And that is the largest percentage of students that we have in eighth grade. Most of our students are in eighth-grade math. So this is an area that by indication of this test, we need to focus on more directly. Fourth and fifth graders, again, close to consistent with the performance in English Language Arts. Now, this is our sixth grade, and that's kind of the other question that we're looking at here. Yes? We can look more closely at the cohort performance, because the first thing you want to say when you see how the sixth grader did this year, this is all current grade levels, because this is this fall's test, is how did they do last year? So we're going to start to look at that now. So this is our current fifth graders. We love the trend, and we can see that in all the categories that are supposed to be getting greater, which is blue, going from about 50% to 70%, that was a nice increase. The same thing with students who have some support. It's roughly the same, but mostly accounted for by the fact that most students moved over into the less support. So this was a nice progression for our current fifth grade. From fourth to fifth grade, they're moving in the right direction, they're closing those COVID-related learning loss. So our current sixth grade, we're not seeing as much movement as we would like to, and in fact, we're seeing more students in our current sixth grade slip into strong support. So when we saw this data, we took a careful look at the scheduling at the middle school and the amount of remedial instruction that is available for our current sixth-grade students. So on tonight's board agenda, the board is going to be asked to approve an additional teaching section for a faculty member to work particularly with these sixth-grade students. So a lot of times, you get a board motion and you see, okay, this is for an additional class of physical education, or this is for an additional class of Spanish. Tonight, we're saying to you, we need an additional class to get more instruction to these students. So one of the things that we found was that not every student that's in strong support is getting remedial instruction or additional basic skills instruction. So we would like to change that. Questions here? I feel like maybe we should pause here before we get to the end. Yes?
Could you pass the microphone to someone, ask them to come in here and ask questions?
What does that look like for this extra teacher to come in? Is it going to be an extra period or every single day, or is it once a week? What does it look like?
So when you say, what does it look like, can you just answer this? Do you mean what does it look like from the student perspective or the master scheduling perspective?
For the student.
So, okay, thank you.
From the student perspective, it would depend. It's one additional period for that teacher, and it would be the same period every, you know, different periods every day, but one additional time. And some students may be requested to go twice a week, other students may go once. So it would, and it can also evolve. The great thing about this data is you can see, maybe somebody just had a really hard time dividing fractions, and maybe they need to meet with this teacher two or three times to master dividing fractions, and then they're good to go. So the answer is, from the student perspective, it would vary based on the data that we have, what type of support they would need. Okay? Our current seventh graders. So this is progress, again, and this is math. We have reduced the number of students who need strong support. I also want to point out, just be very careful with the X and Y axes. I am not an expert with charts. So sometimes you're looking at things that the top is 100, notice that this one is down to 50. So what you're seeing is 40% plus another 35, so 75% are there in math class, doing well, but we have 23% who are going to need more significant support in seventh-grade math. When you compare that to the year before, it was 45%. So they're making progress, but a little slower than we've seen in other areas, which stands to reason because of the complexity of the math and the tasks moving forward. I didn't, sorry, go ahead.
Um, do you want me to?
Oh, sorry.
So if I'm reading this correctly, the children who are in seventh grade now, this is the children who are in seventh grade now, when we were shut down for COVID, they were in the fifth grade at that point? So is it fair to say that they started losing momentum two years prior? Is that what we're inferring from some of this?
I mean, yeah, it's the same for everybody, right?
Okay. Okay.
Current seventh grade is fourth grade, why should I have, what are your quarters?
So it was fourth grade?
Fourth grade.
They were fourth grade in 2020 when we shut down?
We just said they were in fourth grade. So what did we learn from Strong Start? Science and math data were typical with most districts, which is that the learning loss in math is much greater than ELA. It stands to sense, if you were home with your children during COVID, it's a lot easier to have them read a book to you, to you to read to them, to talk about doing activities outside, to get, you know, books from the bookstore, or Amazon, or the library, and just make a literature-rich environment. It's a lot harder to teach math and understand that the math that you're going to teach your children, if you're working on it with it, can enrich their curricular experience in the remote learning era. So we're typical there. Students in grades five and seven have significantly reduced that COVID learning loss, and sixth grade, we didn't see as much. We saw more of a similar performance. As was the case with ELA, we have to make sure that those learning objectives are following that progression, that rich connection to our state learning standards. And then one of the things we're thinking about is that eighth-grade math. Even though we call it grade-eight math, it's still pre-algebra, because it's an introduction of pre-algebra concepts. So when we look at our S R funding, one of the things that I've seen successful in my previous experience is a boot camp, kind of identifying those students, open to anybody, but identifying students who might need some shoring up of skills before they start the class. So dedicating some resources to a pre-algebra or Algebra One boot camp for our seventh-grade students could really assist when they get into grade-eight general math, because it's a big curriculum. Yes? Yes? In the summer? Right. So you point out something that's an obstacle. But the other thing that you can do is that boot camp can kind of be a hybrid. It could be Loom videos. It could be assignments that are required. You know, so it's maybe you have to complete these assignments. We can do some of that web-based, some of it teacher instruction. But also, I think to your earlier question, if you reach out to parents individually, it's going to have a greater impact than just a general invitation and letter. So we would have to be creative in that way. You know, we have a wonderful relationship with recreation. There tends to be less seventh and eighth, seventh graders in recreation, but maybe working with them might be a way to bolster enrollment as well. Yes?
The summer is, aside from the motivation of some of these kids to attend in the summer, families are going away in the summer, and it's very difficult for them to accommodate a boot camp or anything like that. Would we consider doing something like one day a week after school instead of the summer? Because we really don't know why these kids aren't enrolling in the summer. I mean, you know, for example, I would have loved to enroll my kids last summer, but that just happened to be when we were going away. So, and I'm sure the same thing happened with a lot of other families. So would we consider doing it during the school year after school instead of the summer?
So I think we do offer some after school. And we had talked about, what's that Wednesday called again? Win Wednesdays for that one day a week after school. The thing about a boot camp is that it's a concentrated period of time on focused content, and it has proven that that very deliberate type of focused instruction that's repetitive as opposed to just repeating something every week, which has its benefits also. It just might not confer the same level of benefit. Yes?
I just want to add to what Ann just said. I mean, the state invested money in the New Jersey Tutoring Core Program around high dosage tutoring because that's what they found to be the most effective means to remediate what's going on with learning loss. So we don't want to put money in a place just, you know, to be like, have a checkmark, like, oh, we did something that was an intervention because there's already research out there showing what type of interventions are working. So I agree, like, could it be during the school year? But it would have to be like after school for two weeks or for one week. But I think doing the one week separately would probably not show the same outcomes.
Once a week also can help keep you on track where you are, help with homework assignments, but it's not going to be a surgical of a solution. Sorry. Yes?
And I might be anticipating something here, but is there any explanation as to why these two particular grades, or cohorts, I should say, are impacted in this way? Might have something to do with building blocks within the curriculum that they may not have gotten as much of a strong introduction for? And the second question, I think, relates to whether, I mean, every kid experienced learning loss to a certain degree during the pandemic. I would be careful with offering a hybrid program or even an online program as a means to accommodate if that was one of the reasons why we're in this place to begin with. So maybe I'd even encourage some sort of incentive for participation, you know, during the summer boot camp rather than trying to accommodate, you know, schedules around a hybrid program that may not be as effective to begin with.
So I was thinking maybe an incentive would be we could waive their participation fees for extracurricular. They go to, we're almost there. We've almost got them gone. If you do all of our summer programs or our boot camps, then you have no student activity to pay. We could be creative with that. The first part of your question, the very serious part, was what about these two particular grades? What do we know about them? What do we know about their trends of performance? And I think we need a little bit more time to dig into those pieces. But I'm very proud of the work our administrative team has been doing on that. So Mr. Vitarelo met with each individual grade level with the teachers for the subject area, the special education teachers, and the support teachers. And they walked through the data of every student, the performance objectives. So we're starting that work. But because this data is relatively new to us, we do need some more time with it. But we're already making changes. Yes?
Though I agree with your point about online and not working, there are some great online courses like Khan Academy. Have we ever thought about trying to work with them or the local, was it A-plus place right in town? Maybe get this group of people that are on vacation. They don't want to, but we could work with them over the summer to go to places that are here locally. And they can work with our school directly to get them that extra week somehow, somewhere.
It's an excellent suggestion, especially because the Khan Academy resources are free and they are completely aligned with the curriculum. So great suggestion.
And I know that there's always going to be, we always want our children to be all in the blue, right? How do we know when we are back to normal? Being that the test is only two years?
Great question. Stay tuned. That's the third segment of our presentation. So that's the thoughts on math and science. And now we're getting into part of the question that Robin just asked about how do we know where we are? And we go back to the New Jersey State Learning Assessment, which is the final segment of our presentation. Now, as you know, this testing has been on hiatus for a number of years, and we offered it for the first time in 2022 since 2019. So the information that we're going to present next is 2019, 2022, so pre and post-pandemic. But it's not the same cohort of students. So recognize that we can infer general things from it, but it's not an apples-to-apples comparison like our first group of slides. This is the description from the New Jersey Department of Ed of what the NJSLA is. This presentation, we're going to put up online. So you can click on all of the links, especially the links that I'm going to show at the end, and dig a little bit more into these resources. But that gives you a sense of what the NJSLA tests. Okay, so now we have a lot more colors, and they mean different things. So this is spring 22. So when we look at this in spring of 22, remember as you're reading across, this is last year's third grade, last year's fourth grade, last year's fifth grade. So when you're thinking about how they're performing, just remember this was in the spring. And when you're looking at the grades, now you would be talking about in the column to the left, our current fourth grade. In the column to the middle, our current fifth grade. And in the final column, our current sixth grade. So just to get oriented to our new type of graph. And on this graph, there is now four ways to indicate where students are performing. This is a longer test. It's more involved. It has free response. There is opportunities for the students also to write. So it's a more in-depth test. And in this case, we want as much blue and red as we can get. So in each of the cases, you'll see that that red means the students are operating on grade level. The blue means that the students are exceeding the expectations. So maybe their writing was a little bit more sophisticated. Or questions on this test are also ranked for their level of difficulty. So when you're exceeding expectations, you're also demonstrating mastery on the most difficult questions. So our blue and red together tells us that those students in those particular grades are doing very well. The best group to focus on when you want to make a change in performance are your yellow students. And those are the ones that are approaching expectations. If those students were to get anywhere from three to 10 questions more correct over a particular segment, they would move on over to that red and be right on grade level. So one of the things that we've been having conversations about is know who those students are, know what particular area of deficit they demonstrated on the test, and provide targeted instruction to those students. In a district such as Long Hill, where the faculty are consistent, they're highly competent, they know the students well, we're a caring community that values education, a small investment of time on those particular students who have that support at home to do well in school can change the overall performance of your district dramatically. As we move through the slides, I'm going to tell you how many students are in each of those areas and what types of remedies and interventions we'd like to look at. Now, the smaller percentages are the did not meet and the partially met expectations. Those are our orange and green columns on these particular slides. And I want to show you exactly how many students we're talking about in each case. So this first slide is just to provide you with an overview of kind of how does this look? And now we're going to drill down into how many students are we talking about at each grade level? So here we have yet another different graph. In this particular graph, we are looking at students who meet or exceed expectations. So where we would like them to be. And the blue column is showing you the number of students in third, fourth, and fifth grade that are meeting or exceeding expectations in English Language Arts. And the red is a point of comparison for the state. So in each case, Long Hill is outperforming the state. And if you can see our current fourth graders, there were 20 students who are not meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. Because 72 out of 92 are on grade level or operating above grade level. Grade four, not as dramatic of a number, but seven students still. Grade five, which again, that's our current sixth grade that we've been talking about that needs some additional assistance, 57 of 95. So only 60% of students in our current sixth grade were meeting or exceeding expectations for ELA. So the question earlier was how do we know what normal is? Now, as I offered a caveat before, this is not apples-to-apples. But this is where 2019, our students performed on the same test and where they're performing now. So again, how many students are meeting or exceeding standards today as opposed to 2019? And I think that's a great graph, you know, because we talk so much about the learning loss. We're looking at what we're doing. But we see our current third graders and our current fourth, excuse me, our current fourth and fifth graders, when they took the test as third and fourth graders, performed better than the cohort in 2019, but not the same cohort. The difference is with the fifth graders who took the test in the spring, the performance was higher in 2019. So this is now shifting over to middle school. And again, this test was administered in the spring. So these are our current seventh, eighth graders. And then the right-hand column is our ninth graders that we sent to Watchong Hills. Again, in each case, significantly better than the state. And you can see the percentage of students that are not operating at grade level according to this test or above grade level. When we take these, again, not the same group of students, but when we compare to students meeting or exceeding expectations in 2019. So in each area, we're seeing that we were a little stronger in the middle school in 2019 than we are now. But I really wanted to know, what was the story with that eighth grade? One of the best performances we've ever seen. So I looked back, and in 2019, our eighth grade was 67 students. It was the last of the very small classes to go through. And we all know that class size has a tremendous influence on academic performance. So I am sure that they were incredibly bright, and they did very well on those tests. But they also had the benefit of smaller class sizes. And we always talk about how important class size is for academic performance. And this shows that very clearly. So again, what did we learn from the data here? And that's that students in grades three to eight are significantly above the state average in all classes. In the coming months, we will have data from neighboring districts, and we will be able to look at that. So right now, if you go on the state website, you can't pull down other districts just yet. The other thing is everybody has to do their presentation and put their stuff up on the web within a couple of weeks. So we're going to be able to say, okay, we've been hearing things anecdotally at administrative meetings, speaking to other districts. But in the next number of weeks, we're going to be able to really nail down where Long Hill compared, not just to the state, but to districts like ours. And that's very important to us. So those yellow students, the ones who are approaching grade level, it amounts to 18 students on average per grade level three to eight. And then the students who are not meeting expectations or partially effective, that's 10 students. So to put it in perspective, generally, our classes at this point are about 100 a grade level. So we have 10% who are not meeting expectations or partially meeting. And as was previously pointed out, we test everyone. So this includes every student on the grade level. And you can see how focusing on making sure that those 18 students who are approaching get the targeted instruction they need would really make a difference. Yes?
So when kids are transitioning from elementary into middle school, you know, there's often a lot of, you know, social, emotional, physical changes. Have you guys taken the time or thought about, you know, reviewing previous NJSLA data to see if there's any trends that tend to happen, you know, from a cognitive and developmental approach on things that you would tend to see? And then compare that back to the previous test for the COVID test, the ELL, to see if any of that information may sort of change the numbers? I don't know if that makes sense, but...
Sure. I think that one of the things we do look into is how those tests are normed, how certain students respond. Do we, sometimes it's about the proficiency. So one of the things that we saw when we looked at data over time was that we didn't work with students in an online platform as much as we should have. That, of course, is no longer the case because they've had to do that to survive academically over the last couple of years. But definitely, we do look into those trends. We keep historical data. And it's important to also, when we look at the historical data, we divide it out by subgroup, which is where you find most of the trending data. Again, science, we can't compare on NJSLA. This isn't a cohort. This is just grade five and grade eight. How many were advanced proficient? And again, this much we do know consistent across the state just because of the differing sequence of science courses. Now we move on to math. This is what was offered in the spring. And you'll see that the math performance is lower than you will recall on the earlier slide of English Language Arts. And you can also see how we compare to the state. And in this case, this is, it is, because this was a spring test. So if you remember, So if you remember, and I'm just going to flip back to it. This was the comparative performance to the state in ELA in middle school and in elementary school in Millington. So you see the gap significant between Long Hill and the state. And then when you move into mathematics, we see a little closer in grade four and five. And we want to really achieve being much higher above the state. We want those charts to have a much greater difference between our performance and the state average. And 35 of 95 meeting expectations in math is not what should be typical for Long Hill.
And again, this grade five, when we shut down, oh, sorry. This grade five, when we shut down, they were in the second grade. So they're now in sixth grade. So when we shut down, they were in the third grade.
Thank you, Lauren.
All right. I forgot where I was. I'm sorry. Oh, pre and post pandemic. Four Millington students, 2022 to 2019. Consistent in fourth grade, a little less in third grade. And when we look at the difference with the fifth graders, again, current sixth graders, there was a large gap. So here, I think I mentioned to you earlier, geometry is such a small cohort of students. Only six in the spring. And five out of six were meeting or exceeding expectations. 31 out of 32 in algebra, meeting or exceeding expectations. Less than half meeting or exceeding expectations in grade eight and in grade seven. So in both of those cases, half of our students in the grade were not meeting or exceeding expectations. Outpacing the state. But I think we all agree that we'd like to see Long Hill even stronger in all of these areas.
Just the grade eight, they're obviously up there at Watchong Hills now. So in terms of the placement of those students, do we have any feedback or know-how? Are students placed in the classes?
So we send our test results to the high school. And we also receive reports from them if there has to be any grade level shifting from the high school. So if there were an issue with what class they were placed in, we would become aware almost immediately. And there is strong articular, curricular articulation between the middle school and the high school. Their supervisors come and observe our classes. So we have, the feedback that I've consistently gotten from the high school is that central students are placed appropriately at the high school and there is not a concerning amount of level changes. I think the number that was mentioned was, you know, two the last time I got the report.
This is just a quick question on the data. I assume, but I don't want to assume, that grade eight, Algebra I and Geometry are all eighth graders at the time. Is there any overlap between the Algebra I and Geometry students?
These are three distinct groups of seventh and eighth graders. These, geometry is all eighth grade. Algebra I can be seventh or eighth grade. Very few seventh grade students, but there can be seventh grade students in it. This is only eighth grade and that is only seventh grade. And each is reported out differently. There is no overlap. They only take one test. So if you're in seventh grade and an algebra student, you take, don't take grade seven in algebra, you take algebra. That was your, okay. Again, here we have a lot of colors because we're looking at grades, eighth grade, which has that algebra and geometry. So we're comparing pre and post pandemic, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, Algebra I and Geometry. And we can see in this slide, compared to pre-pandemic performance, but not the same cohort of students, we're a little lower on sixth and seventh grade. And we have strong performance still with Algebra and Geometry. So once you start reading all of this, I hope, oh, sorry, I'm a slide ahead in my head. Before I do that, students are significantly above the state average. What do the numbers look like? For the yellow, it's an average of 17 students per grade level. And for not meeting or partially meeting expectations, it's 12. So there are more students on average, which we would expect, at each grade level, grades three through eight that are going to need support in math than those that did in English Language Arts. So the question that I would have is what resources? How do we get there? How are we available to help? What are teachers doing? How do we know how to target particular learning standards? What skills do we have at our disposal? So linked in the presentation, and it's not just for teachers, although teachers will have the additional piece of each student and how they did, is this digital library from the NJ DOE. And I took some pictures just to give you a sense. Once you click on this library, it gives you all of the released tests aligned to all of the particular curricular areas and exemplar questions for each curricular area. So if you knew that your child needed to work on a particular skill, you could look it up and you would get very specific questions that are exactly how they would appear for the child on the test. So being able to practice, and they're pretty complex. Like, I don't think I could have done this. This is fourth, fourth grade? I forget what we picked, Melissa. I want to say fourth grade. But you're doing complicated mathematical multiplication, multi-step problem solving, making an inference after you've come up with a question. So one of the things, because I feel like we've been very direct with all of our data and the areas that we're working on, is also just to take a moment and pause and think how advanced the curriculum has become, the level of sophistication that students are expected to demonstrate and the rigor of these exams. So when you take all of those things into consideration, these are not the same types of tests that we took. There are strong emphasis on critical thinking, practical application of skills, and real-life problem solving, as well as extended and sustained writing tasks. So we will continue to monitor them and generally just ask open questions on anything that you have.
So, I mean, I think I'm a strong believer in the Summer Institute, and I think that's a good option. But we already are in November, and this test is administered in May? April. So there's only so many, May? Yeah, I feel like, so only so many weeks between now and May. And I don't, I guess, I guess I want to be specific about what interventions we're doing between now and May to see improved outcomes for next year. Because in my mind, oh, the Summer Institute's a good solution, but it's not going to be a good solution for next year. So I guess, I guess that's a concern. We only have so many weeks left.
Very good point.
I think, though, that all things stay the same. It's to see the raw scores come out of the kids in the spring without any further intervention. Either way, it will give us a tremendous amount of information without a Summer Institute or, you know, whatnot. Because there's so many variables that can go into this as far as how is a student feeling that day? Are they a good test taker? You know, were they, were they kind of out of it and maybe, you know, selecting the wrong answer? I mean, this is coming from someone who's notoriously a terrible test taker all my life. So, so there is so much that we can learn from it. But I am curious to see what we see and what happens in the spring. Because the last score that we have is from last spring, right? Or the fall, the fall?
No, the one we just was May 2022.
So the one we just saw was May 2022. So we're going to see it in the spring and we get those scores back in, around August?
So I won't do my report yet as student achievement chair, but I will say that this is exactly what student achievement meetings look like. We went through a very, very similar presentation. Dr. Mucci and Mrs. Backer had made some changes after the meeting to it. But I wanted to go back to what we discussed in the meeting at the beginning of the presentation with the ELL, the ELL scores. Because I think that that demonstrates perhaps the results of the hard work and the questioning and the conversations that come from tests. And that we were looking at our ELL scores last year. And as Dr. Mucci said, they made some strategic changes to the programming for those students. And we saw positive results. And one of the things that we see already for tonight, which again, is in my report, but I'll skip it when I'm up there, is that there is the addition of the sixth class for instruction at the middle school. And that's already just in the few weeks that you've had the information. And that student achievement has already scheduled with Dr. Mucci to be speaking with the teachers. Mr. Vittarello is coming to meet with us next month to talk about this. So I guess I just want to say I appreciate the hard work that goes into looking at it. There are difficult discussions. I think that, that when we face it head-on and we make plans for it, that, that will hopefully bring us the success that we saw with the ELL scores.
When you said that you were looking at additional instruction, did you just say adding an additional?
No, Dr. Mucci said last year we had added an additional instruction for ELL. So they had increased from one, one and a half teachers to two full-time teachers. And that was after looking at the test scores and the data and saying, what can we do as a district to problem solve and increase? And so what I was trying to say is that I like that approach. I think that that approach is, it's thoughtful. It's a lot of conversation. I think for members of the board and the community who don't get to sit in on student achievement meetings or in the PLCs that the teachers have, and like Dr. Mucci was saying, the principals speaking with the teachers about the data, there's all this hard work going in that we don't as a community necessarily see. But we get a little bit of exposure, you know, at the presentation tonight. And so with the ELL scores, last year they added in some additional support to help those students who were struggling. And already on tonight's agenda, we're starting to see some plans being put in place for students who are struggling as a result of these scores.
Well, but with the, if we saw the positive come out of that and she's saying.
If we, if, I remember adding that, that extra position. And as Dr. Mucci was saying, that that one eighth grade class, they were a very small class. Should we be looking in the middle schools to, in the middle school math to, and don't, don't hold this against me, to be adding an additional, should, to be adding an additional teacher? So that you can, you can reduce the class size for math and be able to get the students a little better. I know that adding one staff member might seem like, that is a tremendous amount of money for the district to, to take on. But it seems like that might be one way of helping the situation in math. We saw it work in ELA and, well, it was, ELL, I'm sorry. ELL, so clearly, we need to think of something.
Right. Mr. Borgo was saying that an alternative is also to offer instruction before the school day starts. The kids are fresh. And to Ms. Case's point of trying to get, the most bang for your buck, sorry. I've been talking a long time, a little colloquial. But the best result, maybe it is a period zero.
In middle school, though, don't you have the ability to group students by their efficiency in math? Because now they're in periods in middle school, aren't they? So you can group students by their abilities? Does that happen in, in classes in the middle school?
So our middle school is heterogeneously grouped, which means that each classroom has all types of learners. What you're saying with geometry and algebra, that's a selection which would make the group less heterogeneous. But that is the only place that there is ability grouping in the middle school, which is geometry and Algebra I. Everything else is heterogeneously grouped.
Aside from algebra and geometry, how many students are in each of these math classes?
I would have to look that up. I don't know that off the top of my head. Okay, so we'll shift to the next part of the board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mucci, for that presentation and Ms. Backer for your work on it. Next on the agenda, communications. I do not have any. Dr. Mucci?
No.
Okay. And we'll do board committee and liaison reports. Start with Karen.
Okay. Morris County Ed Services Commission went to the meeting last month and I get a mid-month update. Our next meeting is this coming Wednesday. The big thing is they've been having an uptick in their occurrences of COVID-related, both for the staff and the student. However, their students are so significant disabled, significantly disabled, that they don't really have an option to go to remote or to change. So they work very closely with the Board of Health and they instituted some, you know, pretty stringent, you know, health restrictions. And they were allowed to stay open. But it's, it's like a daily review, so to speak. Besides having trouble with bus drivers, or they provide, for the non-public and charter schools, they provide nursing services. And the nursing population has been like a revolving door lately. They're just barely keeping up and being able to provide the services to their, to the universe that they're working with. And they just started their audit. Okay. Governance. We had a meeting. We have one coming up next week. The last meeting was basically focused on our presentation, which, I mean, I don't know, I'm going to say it, I think went over well. Right?
Yes. A smash, Karen, a smash.
Yeah, I think, you know, you're going to go Broadway, right?
I know I'm speaking out of turn. I know I'm speaking out of turn, but I attended it and it was terrific. It was really wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What's coming up next with respect to things associated with governance for the board? It's December 5th. If you recall, we're having training. Charlene Peterson will be with us and we'll be doing the second, I'll call it, the second workshop associated with that governance core workbook. So we'll be doing that.
Sorry, what was the date again?
December 5th, 12/5. Before the meeting. It's going to be, we'll be meeting at 6:30 for the training and 7:30 for the regular meeting. Now with respect to policy, you see that there are three policies up on the agenda. The ones dealing with the Long Range Plan, they were reviewed by BNG. They're all, you know, let's say. They're all, you know, let's say match what is supposed to be done in those, in those policies. So there were really no changes at all, so that's for the first reading. Now the other policy, 9325, there was a little bit of mix-up about whether this was, you know, whether we thought it was the second reading, we forgot whether it was the first reading. So what you have in your packet is a copy of the unvarnished or uncorrected policy as, that was sent out with Dr. Mucci's CSO, with one exception, and I want to say that. In the very, and I'll be sending you an email on it, I thought I was going to have copies. I didn't make the copies and I apologize. There's a very important word in the first paragraph, deals with the, the board president and the counting towards the corner. And it was inadvertently changed to shall, it used to be can, and it is can, it has to be can, per Robert's rules. I looked it up, I have it in the paper, so we have, that has to go back. Above that, or beyond that, this was reviewed by our legal Doug, specifically because of a section that we added dealing with participation by the public. And this is something that I would really like you all to be careful in reading and to provide me directly or to the committee, you know, the policy committee, as all three members, any comments that you may have related to the policy. So we can come up, we can have it adjusted for second reading. Now the biggie, the update on the superintendent search. Today I had like an unbelievable meeting with Jack and Nate, and they turned around in two hours, everything that I asked them to do. It was just totally amazing. So what we have on the website now is a dashboard that's set up for the superintendent search. You can go there and you'll see calendar of events, that's the calendar we're, we're going to be following par any difficulties or changes. You'll see an update, and the update will be done every other week, they'll post it. The most current update will be what is shown, but all updates will be archived, so you can access it. What also is noted today is that there is a survey online now, not only for the school community. We added into like the opt-in people that took advantage of that, you know, particular option on the site, so they don't have to be members of the school community, so that we can search for and get from them information about what experience they think we should be looking for, what background, et cetera. That is also open to the teachers, so it's open to them also because we are having a virtual, I guess a session on the 17th. And just in case the teachers, you know, faculty members cannot make that virtual session, they do have the option of the survey, or if, they could always write me, you know, any, any questions or ask me any questions or send me anything that they want with respect to comments. Just the other thing is right now, we are in the process of finding a, an interim, and the goal is to have approval on the December 5th agenda. So that's that. Any que, oh, one thing I wanted to mention, in the agenda, are you going to see a resolution to approve the contract with the New Jersey School Boards Association for the work that they're doing with us for the superintendent search? And we opted for, I'll quote, the lowest level of service. We're doing most of the work ourselves, and the biggest thing I thought about it was to go up to the next level means they do interviewing and we don't. And we just didn't want to, besides the money, we didn't want to be out of the interview process. And the application itself will be online from December 1st to January 15th at that time, or January 16th, I'm sorry. Then applicant applicants will be viewed. If, in fact, there are viable candidates, it will move on to what I'll call the first round interview. And I say if, it is conceivable because we're going to be pretty strict about what we want. I mean, if we don't get viable candidates, we may stop the search there and the board could decide, will decide when to re-initiate it. So I just, you know, want to put that out there. We're going to work towards a schedule and we hope we're as fortunate as we were in the last go-around, but you never know. So, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, yeah, just important to thank Karen and Ann and Katie for their work on this committee. It's, it is a lot of work, so just thank all the committee for their work. Danielle, any report?
I don't have a report, but I was going to say, kind of, to your point, I think there was also a communication today, right, about, I guess the public was going, allowed to take a survey for what kind of characteristics and things that they were looking for in the next superintendent.
I got to say, Matt and Jack were.
Yeah.
I mean, I think they, by the time they walked back to their office, I think they were working on their, they were just wonderful, like I said, at least tomorrow morning, I said, I would like, we had it in a couple hours, it was done, so it was great.
But that's great, but I don't have a report.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ann?
For the PTO, the November general PTO meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 16th in the Millington All-Purpose Room. Dr. Jones and Mrs. Dawson will be presenting information about the new standards-based K4 report cards, beginning at 7:00 PM, followed by the PTO meeting. All are welcome. Joanne Peng Atkins will visit the first graders for the International Dance Residency from November 29th through December 9th. The PTO is excited to have her back. And the PTO coat drive will be held from December 5th through 16th to collect donations of new or gently-used clean winter coats for distribution through All Saints Church in Middle, Millington. Collection boxes are located in all three schools and in the town hall slash library entrance. And already, as I've said, for student achievement, we met on October 28th. So thank you to Ms. Backer and to Dr. Mucci for the revisions and the additions to the presentation. They had repositioned some of that data into a different graph, you know, for you to see. And I think that it, it was very useful information and the addition of the comparison to the 2019 scores as well, which we had discussed in the meeting, so thank you for that. As I said, we'll be meeting with Mr. Vittarello to continue discussions of what we were talking about tonight and the basic skills support in the, the middle school and also the support within the classrooms in the middle school. We're hoping to talk about the alignment, you know, across the different subject matters, the transition from fifth to sixth grade. And we felt as a committee, we had met with the specialists in the elementary schools more recently, so we wanted to start with that middle school, focus with Mr. V. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for Ann? Okay, Matt?
The Finance Committee met this past week and thank you, Melissa, for writing up my notes. So any mistakes, they're all yours. We're probably just speaking incorrectly. So as Karen mentioned, with the NJ SBA superintendent search, we are going into a contract for $4,000, I believe, based on past experience, it's more than worth it. And like you said.
It wasn't by inflation, that's the same price.
Yeah, same price, it's always, yeah.
Amazing.
Exactly. The 2023-24 budget calendar has already been put in place and it's basically the mirror last year's calendar, which worked out well. Kudos to Robin, she increased our interests by like 800 million percent of PNC. Whatever monies we had in savings, we were getting .01%, not 1%, but 1/100 of that. And just by making a simple phone call, she got up to .3. So .3 from .01, I can't do the math that quickly, but it's a ridiculous amount. And she has more phone calls out to see if you can get that even higher. So if you just think about it, I mean, that's still not even 1%. You know, with the amount of money we have, how much do we have in maintenance? How many million?
A lot.
A lot.
Not enough.
At the very least, I think you would get 1%. So kudos to you for just making that phone call and getting that. You will not see that in a raise, by the way. Just some housekeeping, there is a $143 square foot cost allowance that's used by the New Jersey Department of DEP?
Department of Ed.
DOE.
Department of Ed.
It is, Department of Ed, okay. To calculate the maximum amount of district that we can have in our maintenance reserve and based upon our square footage of our buildings, we have just over $1 million and we're just in coordinates with that and that's where we're allowed to be. Or actually, I'm sorry, we're allowed to have up to that. We only have about $464,000. So that just means going forward with other future budgets.
For sure.
We would be able to increase that without any problem. And we want to increase that because that's where if we have major maintenance disaster, we have the money that's in-house, that's not going to be any tax levy on top of any, anything else to any taxpayer. We have it in-house, we can take care of it immediately for ourselves. Mark, I don't know if I'm stealing any of your thunder, but Mark will also review this further in the Building and Grounds Committee, just to make sure it's where it needs to be. We have lots of annual CUSAC health and safety value checklists. They're going to be submitted to the board for review at the next meeting, which is this meeting. We have the application for state school and aid instruction. The application has not been submitted, but it's due in December. We have the district report of transported resident students. This has already been submitted. We have the ESER 1 CARES Act final expenditure report. This report is to evidence our expenditures for the first ESER grant and it's had, it has been submitted to the state. We have the ESEA Title I performance report, and this report is required from the state and New Jersey Department of Education to receive the ESEA funds, and that's due on November 18th. We're, every year we go through an audit and at this point, we're still waiting for the receipt of the final audit. They asked for additional information, which was given immediately to them, and so far, nothing, and that's good.
None of this is good news.
Yeah, that's the one time we know. Bus driver update, although the bus driver has his CDL, it was determined that he needed additional training. So out of his own pocket, he's going to, out there obtaining his training, and he's going to keep the office, the VA's office updated as to how it's going and when he's going to be ready. At this point, we're still hoping that he's going to be employed by the 1st of December. And as of now, that's still.
Same thing, yes.
Okay.
What kind of training?
It's almost like behind the wheel at a bus, so you have to go to a, a training center of a bus company. So we went to one of our training centers, tried to get a reduced rate for him since he's paying for it himself. We were able to obtain that and he's going to class as we speak. He needs so many hours to perform so he could go back to motor vehicles and put the bus 10 feet forward, 10 feet in reverse and make a K-turn.
And that was just for substitute bus driver or?
That is for a bus driver that we're working in conjunction with Watch on Hills to do field trips and athletic trips.
Where we're going to keep the bus here and he's going to be able to use it.
Okay, nice.
Just make it cheaper for everybody. Okay. Okay, we have a resolution on the board to approve a contract extension for our technology coordinator Nate that will take him to the end of the school year. And then after that, Karen and her group might be in charge of another search for, for our technology coordinator. Jack Carnet, he's our systems technician, he wrote a letter to the state and obtained a $5,000 grant for reimbursement towards $17,000 that we spent on cybersecurity. So it was a nice little job that he did there. And as a committee, we agreed that it's probably something we should always revisit every year is just reviewing our insurances, everything that we have and just make sure that everything is where it needs to be. And I know we did do that about a year or so ago, but it's just something just to bring up every year, just to make sure we are covered wherever we need to be. And lastly, Melissa, Ann and I reviewed all the bills and we took care of them all, took a little bit longer than normal, but we took care of them. And they're all on the agenda, so we appreciate everybody voting yes to all of our financial resolutions.
Okay, any questions for Matt? Maybe our new bus driver once confirmed, we could put a little sign on Gillette welcoming them after all the hoopla that he's had to go through.
Great idea.
Okay, Alex?
Thank you very much. The Building and Grounds Committee met on Friday, November 4th at Central Middle School, I think. Dr. Mucci and Mark Priscina, Adele Valentin, Karen Nyquist for attending. It was a really robust agenda that we had, very quickly on the project updates. We're still waiting for one new door for Central School locker room. The HVAC plumbing and electrical continues to receive its preventative maintenance and minor repairs, and we were assured that the Pritchard staff has, has growing experience and is doing more and more of this work in-house. There was a small insurance claim that was filed to change an emergency transfer switch at Gillette School, I think it was. We had a fairly robust conversation regarding the HVAC system and some, I guess, pricing that's currently being done to flush out some of the internal water that's on some sort of loop. And once that's completed, I think there's going to be a repair to re-insulate some of those, some of those pipes related to the HVAC system. I think I got that right. Tree pruning, it's something that's typically done every, twice a year, but I think we're, we're still working with our tree service provider or, or tree pruning provider to ensure that the work that they've been hired for is complete and, and to address these kind of things before the winter season. Locksmith continues to do work in trying to swap out some of the universal and master keys. And building relighting project is near complete but not fully done yet, and once it's 100%, it will be called for an audit. I continuously am impressed by Mark's attention to detail and passion for the work. You know, with respect to integrated pest management, for example, he indicated to us that the updated licenses from the vendors were received, and that's a level of attention and detail that we have to appreciate. With respect to playground equipment, we had some discussion about replacing monkey bars, I think, over at Millington, identifying those as probably the next in need of some sort of repair or replacement. And we're still waiting for some of the safety mats to be installed. And there was some discussion about the infield maintenance for the ball fields at each, each of the schools, something that's an expensive line item that we're going to try to do. One field maybe annually, and we'll be seeing that on the 2023-24 budget. The most encouraging, I think, of, of all of these was the discussion that we had related to a draft five-year capital improvement plan that was received from the architect. We went through that and there was a thick presentation filled with pictures and estimated budgets over a five-year period of time with a whopping number that we're not yet ready to present. But the intention behind it is to be forward-looking and to always have an eye on what our priorities should be in creating a healthy and safe and robust environment where our students can learn. To that end, most of the focus in the coming summer will be for Central School, where there were a number of obvious things that needed to be repaired and some less than obvious things that needed to be fixed. But between, I believe it was four or five, I'm not going to say underutilized, but educational spaces that with some modest to medium level reinvestment could be much more enhanced for educational learning, to take advantage of every single square foot that we have for educational needs. These were the kind of projects that we were identifying. And then some other kind of facility things that really just need to be fixed. So we, we took, did a walkthrough at Central, it was very encouraging to see, one, how well-maintained the school is in general, but also where we can devote some of our deferred maintenance and buildings and grounds money to, to making improvements. I want to wrap this up, so, you know, these are, these are long discussions that we had, we have very informed staff. One note that I wanted to make, it was actually about Adele, when it was after the meeting had ended and we were just kind of having a conversation afterwards. I had the good pleasure of attending the school boards convention, so thank you to the district for sending a handful of us. The governance presentation was outstanding, but there were many other presentations that we attended while we were down there that were great. And some of the ideas that I had learned about when I was down there related to buildings and grounds, I brought back, and I just got into an informal conversation with Adele and Mark. And without skipping a beat, I asked about some, some green ribbon program and she was able to. was able to pull something right out of her...
Folder.
Pull right out of her folder and explained to me that she's looking into it, and there is grant opportunities available that we're looking into. So again, very encouraging professional staff that's very well-prepared for all the questions we throw at them. So with that, I close.
Thank you. Any questions for Alex? Okay, Melissa?
No report for my stuff, but Katie unfortunately cannot be here tonight, and I know she was very excited to announce that FORCE, which, when Katie and I ran for the school board five years ago, I guess, at this point, one thing that she said she always wanted to do was revamp FORCE, was bring it back to life. And she real, with, with the help of the board, she really, really did. And I am so excited that they are paying, I think it was around $5,000 for a presenter tomorrow for the middle school, and his name is David Flood. And if you don't know who David Flood is, he has like 50 million likes on a lot of his clips. He is a motivational speaker for children. He is a father of a special-needs child. He grew up in a very rough household. He has a tremendous amount of life experience and the most incredible way of communicating it to children, especially of the middle school. So she was so excited to announce that tonight, but she ran into a childcare issue. So I want to applaud Katie, and I want to applaud FORCE, or the Long Hail Education Foundation, for so generously paying for what will be a tremendous presentation tomorrow that I will be going to. So I'm, I'm very excited that, that, that that happened and that FORCE made that happen. And I'm sorry Katie wasn't here to announce it.
Good job, Katie.
Yes, that's great.
I'll just jump on to what Melissa said. In the information that is sent home to Central Middle School parents, there was a lot of nice information, like a link where you could get information about the speaker. You know, so sometimes I think as a parent, you're wondering, what exactly is this about? And it was great to have it ahead of time for us to look at.
He's phenomenal.
Okay. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a number of motions, and one of them I already mentioned, which was Motion 24 for the support for the additional six-period class for our middle school students. I also am putting to the Board tonight, you'll see in motions 26 and 28, to approve student teachers. It's such an important part of the process to encourage student teachers and to place them and give them meaningful learning experiences. And it's wonderful that we have teachers who are willing to share their skills and talents with those who aspire to be teachers. Proud of motions 31, 30, 31, and 32. That's a continuation of our relationship with the Consortium for Gifted and Talented. They're applying so many wonderful enrichment opportunities for our students across the grade levels. Motion 35 is the School Safety and Security Plan, which has been updated with some of the new additions in terms of visitor safety, best practices, and protocols. So that was a thoughtful process that underwent a number of improvements this year, and we are pleased to present that to the Board. I think motions 37 through 42 really demonstrate the empathy that our students are constantly showing for others, a commitment to service. It aligns with the launching of Central's Community Service Outreach Group, which was a student-led initiative from the Students of Central to begin working in the community with only the interest of serving and helping others. And I think it's so fitting that those motions are on with the announcement of our School Safety and Data System, which is at the beginning of your packet tonight, and it's the data from January to June about the amount of HIBs, acts of violence. When you take a look at those numbers and you see how safe our school is and how our students are behaving so incredibly responsibly, it naturally flows that such students are developing a strong sense of themselves and how to care for their classmates and their community. So it's a pleasure to share that. And as usual, everybody did such a great job with their committee reports that there isn't much else to highlight, except that we do, on behalf of the faculty, staff, and administration, want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and an enjoyable time during the teachers' convention. Since it is before our next board meeting, the tree lighting at Millington is December 4th, I think.
Oh, wow.
No, no, Danielle.
Myrtle, the tree.
Myers-Ville. Did I get the date right, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, December 4th, and Central Band is playing there. So we're going to be excited to see them at the tree lighting, and we thank Danielle and the committee for putting that together and for including the schools.
Of course. Okay, any questions for Dr. Mucci? No, okay. Interim Business Administrator's Report.
Sure. Matt touched on a lot of our items for tonight's agenda. We also have our financials for September, participation fees at Central Middle School, our debt service collection, which is our long-term debt that we have to, an annual report that we have to submit to the State of New Jersey, obviously the Superintendent's check, Superintendent's search. And on motion 20, which is a special services motion, the last two items are bold, they're not new placements. It's students that were placed in September, and if they need added therapies, we put that on our motion, so it's not as if we incorporated another $220,000 in motions. It's additional about $12,000 to $15,000 for OT and PT for one student, and again, for a second student. And we'd like to keep it all in one motion, so if someone needs to go look at it, they could see all our placements. Anything bold, it would be your difference. So that's what you would see in motion 20. And let's see, one other item on the insurance. We call the insurance that Finance was looking for, so hopefully we'll have them give us a detail of all, all of our coverages on our declaration page, then hopefully at our next Finance meeting, they could come in and speak about it, do our due diligence to make sure we're not overinsured, we're not underinsured, that we're properly insured. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, any comments from the public on agenda items? Okay, so we'll move to resolutions. Karen, will you move in number one, the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Ravelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Danielle, will you move in financials, numbers 2 through 19?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Ravelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Ann, will you move in number 20, Special Services and Personnel, numbers 21 through 29?
So moved. Second.
Questions? Okay.
I'll leave. Very sadly, we're going to approve Resolution 21. But we do wish you the best.
Roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Ravelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Matt, can you move in curriculum numbers 30 through 32?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Ravelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Alex, will you move in policy numbers 33 to 34?
So moved.
Second. Questions?
Yes. For 33, the 932, policy 9325. I know that Tom had some revisions. Are we right now approving it without those revisions? How does this work?
This, this does not have any of those revisions.
So if revisions are going to be made, especially switching the can and the shell, how does...
Well, that, that can, how should I say this? The shell shows is changed. That was wrong. We should have removed that and put the can. Can was originally...
Yeah.
I did not get, the only ones I got comments, I got comment from Danielle and Tom, and I had my own comments. I want comments from, from the Board, especially on that section about participation from the public.
Got it. So next month, when this goes back on our agenda for a second reading, is it going to be as revised?
It's going to be revised.
Okay, that's what I just want to make sure I understand. Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. Giorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Ravelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Melissa, we move in other items, 35 through 42.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mr. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Ravelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Any items for discussion? Old business? New business? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, at this point, the Board of Education welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. Please note that as per Board Policy Number 1120, a total of 15 minutes is allocated for public comments at any single board meeting. In order to provide residency opportunity to comment, individual speakers are limited to three minutes each at any particular board meeting. The Board may extend these time limits at its discretion. Any questions should be directed to the Board President, and depending upon the nature and complexity of the question, it may or may not be answered during the meeting by the administration. If so, the response would occur after this public portion of the meeting has concluded. Everyone has the freedom to speak, but please be advised that anything said in public may have legal ramifications, and there is no protection regarding statements made by the public. Please state your name and address before you begin.
I'm more in favor of President of the LHA. I was coming here tonight just to ask that we can work at pay substitute teachers more and more in town. We need to get subs here more. Other districts pay more than we do. Just as an example, West Morris is paying $150 a day. Break our sub pay up, it's less than minimum wage. So you kind of have to work, and now we're, we have to help that student achievement. Teachers need to be in the classrooms for students to achieve. If we're getting pulled, and we can't give those supports to children, that affects them. So we need to find a way, I mean, people who go to Berkeley Heights, they make $20 a day, just down the road. So we are way off the mark with what we're paying subs. So I think we need to look at that and figure out how we're going to fix this. Thank you.
Didn't we address that at some point?
We, we kicked it up last year. We may have to readjust it again this year.
So we did adjust it higher, so we just have to...
We adjusted it a year ago for September.
Is it 115?
I don't know if Tom, I...
100?
100.
Oh, I'm, I'm surprised.
We, yeah, I think originally, we were at the lowest.
I thought we had gone up to like 110 or 115.
No, we were at the lowest, and then we moved up. But we moved up, and then I guess everybody else...
Yes, I think everyone else moved up after we moved up. So we still...
Oh, they said Long Hill's paying more, we gotta pay more.